I'd like to bring to order our Board of Education Business Meeting for January the 12th. Thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight. Before we begin, I would like to recognize some individuals. Our presentation of colors tonight will be the combined unit of the Air Force ROTC Cadets, and they will be participating will be Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Alyssa Maynard from Central Cabarrus High School, and she's instructed by Lieutenant Nelson English and Sergeant Terry McCabe. We will have Cadet Captain Matt Cavenas from Pleasant High School, and he's instructed by Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin and Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell. I have Cadet Captain Ishmael Villasenor from Northwest Cabarrus High School, and he's instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin and Sergeant Kareen Smith. And Cadet Captain Kelly Brown from J.M. Robinson High School, instructed by Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose and Sergeant Wayne Altrum. We also have with us tonight, in presenting our National Anthem from Northwest Cabarrus High School, the Trombone Quartet consisting of Cover Johnson, Andrea Lawrence, Connor Phillips, and Caleb Robbins. If all of y'all will please stand as the colors come in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One, two, three, four.
Attention, march!
Our Resource Officer tonight is Keith Drake. Officer Keith Drake is in the back, he's with Bethel, and he does an outstanding job, and we appreciate your participation tonight, Officer Drake. Board members, I need a motion to adopt our agenda. Do I have one?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, motion carries, agenda is as written. First one tonight is our recognition for Teacher Leader Cohort, and Ms. Glenda Jones will come to the podium, please.
Alright, good evening. Before I ask this prestigious group back here to stand, I would like to share some information about them. In her book, Teacher Leadership That Strengthens Professional Practice, Charlotte Danielson said, "The term 'teacher leadership' refers to that set of skills demonstrated by teachers who continue to teach students but also have an influence that extends beyond their classrooms to others within their own school and elsewhere. It entails mobilizing and energizing others with the goal of improving schools' performance of its critical responsibilities related to teaching and learning. During the fall of 2012, several CCS district leaders envisioned a program to extend the learning of teachers and allow the exploration of leadership options while still remaining in the school building. The group you see before you is the first cohort of the Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Leaders Program. This group met for the first time in January of 2013 with a total of eighty teachers who accepted the challenge. Tonight, we end with sixty-six graduates. From this first cohort, we have hired seven Assistant Principals and one Instructional Specialist. Two of the original members are now Assistant Principals in other districts, and two of our members are currently in the Principal Fellows Program. Two of our members are currently working towards master's degrees in school administration, and eleven of these teachers serve as lead mentors in their schools. In addition to these pursuits, all of these teacher leaders also collaborated with their principals to develop and take on leadership roles within their schools. Therefore, within this group, we have PLC Chairs, Grade Level and Department Chairs, School Improvement Chairs, Mentors, Teacher Recognition Committee Chairs, and CCS Curriculum Writers and Facilitators. Our goal for this program was to provide these teachers, who were already superstars in the classroom, the professional development to help extend their skills to increase the capacity for leadership in their school and in our district. These teacher leaders now use their enhanced skills to have crucial conversations, make strategic and sound decisions, understand and explain the essential components of effective instructional and engagement practices, and to teach their adult colleagues differently than they teach their students. Therefore, they have assuredly extended their influence from teaching their own students to supporting and nurturing other teachers to be more impactful in the classrooms. I'll end with a quote from one of our teacher leaders that sums up our program's impact on their leadership skills. When asked how the program had affected her, Jessica Parker said, "I am more confident in serving as a leader on my school staff. It is one thing to serve as a leader, and another to be effective and confident in doing so. This cohort has helped me to develop the latter." At this time, I'm going to ask these graduates to please stand so that we may recognize them, and I'd also like to ask Michelle Klein and Dr. Adam Arbok, who are our Teacher Leader Facilitators, and several of our distinguished administrators in the school district, to stand as well. And we are going to allow them to leave, those that would like to stay are going to stay, and I think several, or at least one, have another award that's going to be presented later, but we'll exit from this direction, and then anybody that needs to take a seat may.
Now if you can find an empty seat, please take your time and find a place to rest your bones for a little while. We're getting ready to go through our Impact Through Education Awards. Ms. Ronnie Boone has come to the podium, and she is ready to go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Tonight, for our Impact Through Education Awards, we will recognize students and staff members at Royal Oaks Elementary School and also at Central Cabarrus High School. Before we begin the awards, I want to give a special thank you to our friends at Concord Printing for their continued sponsorship of these awards and in helping us recognize our students and staff members each month. We'll begin with Royal Oaks Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Royal Oaks Elementary School Leadership Team to please come forward at this time to stand with their students and staff members. Our first honoree from Royal Oaks this evening is, and please be patient with me on the pronunciation, Jaime Rosales Aveldáñez. Would Jaime and his family please come forward?[781.13][781.13](applause) Is it Jamie? I'm sorry, it's Jamie, sorry. Stand next to Ms. Carl Burke. And your family can come forward, too. Jamie is a fifth grader at Royal Oaks Elementary School. His favorite subjects in school are math, reading, and science. He is a hard worker and a dedicated student. He recently represented Royal Oaks at the County Spelling Bee last week, and he's also a member of the Hero Club at Royal Oaks. A friend describes him as "a loyal person who always tries to find a way to help people." Congratulations, Jamie, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Royal Oaks Our next honoree from Royal Oaks is Madison Hodges. Would Madison and her family please come forward?
Madison is also a fifth grader at Royal Oaks Elementary School. She enjoys dancing and drawing. Her favorite subjects in school are math and science. Madison is an excellent student who works hard every day in her classes. She, too, is a member of the Hero Club and is a leader in spreading kindness and compassion throughout the school. One of her classmates describes her as "a good friend who always tries to help people, and she always puts others before herself." Congratulations, Madison, you are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Royal Oaks Our next Royal Oaks honoree is Ms. Grace Ulrich. Would Ms. Ulrich and her family please come forward? Grace Ulrich has been a lead teacher at Royal Oaks Elementary School for two years. She is an amazing resource for the school's staff. Her knowledge of the curriculum, organizational skills, and alternative methods of reaching all ability levels are just a few of the qualities that make her an outstanding lead teacher. Her trainings are thorough, professional, and engaging. She delivers professional development that is relevant, provides tools that help implement the training immediately, and coaches teachers to ensure they receive continued support. She also is quite an accomplished videographer, as she creates Flashback Friday videos for the staff to guarantee they begin their day with a laugh. Ms. Ulrich has high expectations for her students. Her instruction is task-oriented and engaging. She provides immediate, direct, and encouraging feedback to her students, and she is creative in finding ways to meet with many groups of students that need assistance. Simply put, she is an awesome asset to Royal Oaks. Congratulations, Ms. Ulrich, and thank you for making an Impact Through Education at And our final honoree this evening from Royal Oaks Elementary School is Mr. Larry Hunter. Would Mr. Hunter and his family please come forward?[1141.13][1141.13](applause) Larry Hunter is the School Resource Officer at Royal Oaks Elementary School. He joined Royal Oaks near the end of last school year and immediately began to build positive relationships with the staff and students. He comes to school every day with a smile on his face and goes above and beyond to ensure that Royal Oaks is a safe environment for working and learning. Officer Hunter demonstrates a caring heart and is a positive role model for students. He reaches students by taking the time to teach them a life lesson or give them a hug at just the right moment. He is able to make connections between the community and the school. He is an outstanding leader and is a huge asset to Royal Oaks, both the school and the community. One word used to describe Officer Hunter is "phenomenal." One Royal Oaks student said about Officer Hunter, "Officer Hunter is a person who keeps the law and keeps the school safe. He takes care of our school, and he is a nice person. I want to be like Officer Hunter when I grow up." Enough said. Thank you, Officer Hunter, for making an impact at Royal Oaks Elementary School. Now we'll start with our honorees from Central Cabarrus High School. I'd like to invite any members of Central Cabarrus's leadership team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff at this time. Our first honoree from Central Cabarrus High School this evening is Dayton Aredia. Would Dayton and his family please come forward? Dayton is a senior at Central Cabarrus High School. He is a strong student and displays a level of maturity almost unmatched among his peers. In his years at Central, Dayton has excelled both athletically and academically. He's been in numerous service clubs such as Link Crew and HOSA. Dayton also is a member of the varsity football team and the varsity baseball team. He ranks near the top of his class and is active in many aspects of the school. Dayton will do anything for anyone. It is his compassion for others and his ability to develop positive relationships that have had a tremendous impact at Central Cabarrus. One of his teachers states, "I got to know Dayton last year during lunch, while serving as lunch duty monitor. He would often ask to go visit his favorite office staff members just to brighten their day." Another teacher comments, "Dayton's positive impact at Central," comments about Dayton's positive impact at Central. "He's very conscientious in class and gives his time freely to his classmates. Dayton's heart and outgoing nature stand out amongst his fellow Vikings. It is an honor to present him with the Impact Through Education Award for Central Cabarrus High School." Our next honoree from Central is Sophia McFarland. Would Sophia and her family please come forward at this time? Sophia McFarland is also a senior at Central Cabarrus High School. She is dedicated, honest, she is a dedicated, honest, and enthusiastic student. In her years at Central Cabarrus High School, she's been both a star in academics and athletics. She's been involved with National Honor Society, Beta Club, Interact Club, and the Women's Track Team. Currently, she is ranked second in her class, is captain of the varsity girls' basketball team, is the student body president, and a semifinalist for the Morehead Kane Scholarship at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Sophia's leadership skills have had a positive impact at Central Cabarrus High School. Her leadership teacher explains her impact at Central by saying she is a true leader, has an impeccable work ethic, has illustrated integrity in all that she does, and is perhaps one of the best role models to have ever walked the halls of Central Cabarrus High School. Her guidance counselor states, "Sophia participates in class enthusiastically, is creative, and is extremely conscientious. Her character is beyond reproach." Sophia McFarland is an outstanding student at Central and definitely exemplifies Viking pride. Our next, our next Central Cabarrus honoree is Mrs. Patty Norris. Would Mrs. Norris and her family please come forward? Here alone? Okay. Mrs. Norris has been an English teacher at Central Cabarrus High School for the last seven years. She's taught English I, High School Success, and honors English IV. In her time at Central, she's had a positive impact on countless students who have been in her classes. She is an extremely hard worker and truly loves seeing growth in a child. Mrs. Norris is a gifted educator. In leading the High School Success Program, she worked with many students who came to her reading below grade level. She had a great challenge ahead of her in not only developing the students' reading skills and preparing them for an end-of-course exam, but also in inspiring them to believe in themselves and their abilities to achieve greatness. Every year, Mrs. Norris was able to meet all of those challenges and not only helps students get on grade level, but they also go on to have very successful, have a very successful rest of their high school experience at Central. Mrs. Norris is dedicated to the students. Lessons are student-focused with engaging presentations and interaction. She's dedicated to the teachers. She shares her experiences with new ideas to help all teachers learn and grow. She mentors and guides beginning teachers, and she's dedicated to the school. She is a Viking. Mrs. Norris supports the school and the Central way of life. One of her colleagues says, "Mrs. Norris always acts in the best interest of every student she teaches. She allows them the freedom they need to express themselves while teaching them how to be better people." Thank you, Mrs. Norris, for your dedication to your students, your colleagues, and to And our final honoree this evening from Central Cabarrus High School is Mr. Norman Cooley. Would Mr. Cooley and his family please come forward at this time? Mr. Cooley has been the head custodian at Central Cabarrus for the last three years. In each of those years, he has led his team to maintain a 100% rating on the school's annual health inspection. Mr. Cooley is a graduate of Central Cabarrus High School and cares deeply about the learning environment for both students and staff. He works tirelessly to ensure that Central is safe and clean for everyone to enjoy. School leaders often hear from guests how wonderful the building looks, especially considering the school's almost fifty years old. Central's Assistant Principal Jason Valentine states, "Norman Cooley is without a doubt the most reliable, highly skilled, toughest, hardest-working, positive, enthusiastic custodian I have ever worked with. He can fix anything. There isn't a snake, mouse, stray dog, skunk, possum, or any other member of the animal kingdom known to trespass on a school campus that intimidates him. Nothing grosses him out. Nothing scares him. He'll climb to the highest part of the building and descend to the lowest point on the campus to accomplish his mission. He never misses work. He never avoids difficult tasks. If he can't..." If he can't fix it, it isn't broken." Thank you, Mr. Cooley, for all that you do for the students and staff at Central Cabarrus
We've come to our Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month Award, Dr. Barry Shepherd, Ms. Glenda Jones, and Ms. Ronnie Boone, if you'll come to the podium, please.
All right, thank you. Our chief communication officer, Ms. Ronnie Boone, will be representing Mr. Tim Vaughn tonight, who is unable to attend with us, and of course, Dr. Shepherd. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. We begin the new year by honoring another one of our outstanding teachers and honor her as the Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month. As always, we extend our thanks and gratitude to Hilbisch Ford and Mr. Vaughn for their continued support and generosity in helping us recognize and reward our teachers. The Cabarrus County Schools' Hilbisch Ford Teacher of the Month for January is Lori Tarleton. Mrs. Tarleton, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward?[721.51][721.51][applause] Lori Tarleton is a first-grade teacher at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. She was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote, "Lori Tarleton is one of the finest educators I've ever seen. She is kind, compassionate, sincere, dedicated, and pushes children to reach their full potential. Mrs. Tarleton manages to know each child's strengths and weaknesses and how to address these appropriately. She goes above and beyond by providing students with extra opportunities to work on their skills and to continue learning inside and outside of the classroom. She communicates effectively with parents and responds to our questions. She enjoys working with parents to help them and their children. I count myself blessed as a parent to have my son taught by this wonderful, talented educator who is truly magical in the classroom." Mrs. Tarleton, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for being so wonderful and for working your magic in the classroom. Now, please allow Dr. Shepherd and Mrs. Boone to present you with your award, and then please go through so the board can congratulate you.
Okay, we've come to the Holiday, Holiday E-Card Design Contest winners. Dr. Barry Shepherd and Ms. Ronnie Boone will be doing the presentations.
For the past four years, Cabarrus County Schools and our Public Relations Department have sponsored a Holiday E-Card Design Contest. Students enter original art designs in the hopes of having their work selected as the cover art for the superintendent's electronic holiday greeting, which is sent to CCS employees, superintendents across North Carolina, local business and community leaders, as well as elected officials. This year, more than 400 students submitted designs. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce you to the winners, to our talented winners. Students, when I call your names, please come forward to receive a special certificate from Dr. Shepherd. Our elementary school-level winner is Danielle Lee Kim. Danielle is a third-grade student at Patriot STEM Elementary School, and her teacher is Ms. Sherry Lee. Stay right there, Danielle, listen to them, stay right there. Our middle-school level winner is Darshana Saravanen. Would Darshana please come forward?[955.63][955.63][applause] Darshana is an eighth-grade student at J.N. Freeze Magnet School, and her teacher is Ms. Meredith Farrell. And just, just a note to the parents, we can get copies of these photos to you guys as well. Sierra is a 12th grader at Northwest Cabarrus High School, and her teacher is Ms. Deanna Ladd. And I would like to note that this is the second consecutive year that one of Mrs. Ladd's students has won this contest.
Can I just add, I want to thank Mike Martin for going to such care. He took your individual picture and put it on the certificate as well as putting this together. You just made something special even more special. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.[1040.75][1040.75][applause]
Hold on, Dr. Shepherd. And I'd like to make one final note about these awards. I want to say thank you to Super Target for providing $25 gift cards for our winners
All right, we're going to approve the minutes from the December 1st, 2014 Work Session and the December 8th Business Meeting. Board members, I'll need a motion for each of these. I hope that you've had a chance to read these. And Mr. Walter, you have a change?
Just a one minor change on the December 8th, 2014 minutes on page number eight. That's, I guess, the fourth paragraph there, last sentence. Instead of eliminating minorities, I intended to say reduce minority participation.
Any other comments? That was the December...
December the 8th minutes.
Board members, we have the December 1st meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? We have the December 8th minutes, and we have one change that Mr. Walter brought to us. I'll need a motion to approve these. So, Mr. Harrison, and I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Phillips, Dr. Phillips, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, motion carries. The minutes are now approved. We've come to the reports section, and I just have just a one comment that I want to make, and that is how proud I am of our Transportation Department and what they did over the last week when we had some extremely cold temperatures. They rallied to the occasion, and they had about 30 buses that didn't want to participate, but they were able to find a way to make it happen, and we were able to safely get our children to school during that period of time. I believe a lot of times our parents take this for granted, but our transportation group does a wonderful job on the buses in making sure not only the buses for Cabarrus County Schools, but the buses for the Kannapla City Schools are all in top-running order. So, again, my hat's off to that group for what they did over the past week. All right, Dr. Shepherd. Oh, okay. We have some guests tonight. We have with us Liz Poole from the County Commission as our vice chair. She's representing our county, and we're glad to have you here. And she was also one of the leadership cohorts tonight. And I know that that was a hard journey, not only doing what she has to do in the classroom, but being a county commissioner and then dedicating all that time for the cohort. Our county manager, Mike Downs, is here as well, and thank you again, Mike, for participating with us tonight. And, is that Rachel? Rachel. Grace isn't here. And we have Rachel Wilks with us from the Cabarrus Education Foundation. Rachel, thank you for joining us tonight. Dr. Shepherd?
All right, thank you, sir. I'd like to begin by just welcoming everyone back from the winter break, and just to remind you that this Friday is the end of the first semester, and high school students are taking their exams this week, and they'll be dismissed early from school each day this week. And all students will be dismissed early on Friday, January the 16th. And for more details about specific dismissal times, I would invite you to visit our website if you have questions about that. And also, please remember that there will be no school for students on Monday, January 19th, and Tuesday, January the 20th. Also, congratulations to our newly-crowned spelling bee champion, Bryce Beely, a seventh grader at J.N. Freeze Magnet School. He won our district's annual spelling bee last week. Last year's spelling bee winner, Joy Jackson, an eighth-grade student at Harris Road, was this year's runner-up. I'm also happy to report that our school system has been the recipient of an additional grant to support our STEM education efforts. We've received a $1.5 million grant to be distributed over three years for STEM education for after-school programs. We'll be partnering with Camp Intervention to deliver STEM-based education at four schools. And finally, just a reminder that applications for our Magnet programs will be available online beginning tomorrow. Magnet open-house events continue this week and next week. Visit our website, www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us for further details. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. We've come to the guest speaker portion of our program. Before I introduce our guest speaker for tonight, I'd like to just reiterate that our guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk at 704-262-6238 by 12 noon on the Friday prior to our business meeting. Individuals addressing the board may speak for three minutes, and persons representing a group may speak for five minutes. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the board and also for their cooperation in presenting information within the timeframe allotted. Mrs. Wilma Means would like to talk to us tonight, so, Ms. Means, would you please come forward? Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight on an issue that's very important to me, educational opportunity for all students, NCCS. According to the School Attendance and Student Accounting Manual, 2014 and 2015 edition of the Public School of North Carolina, Chapter 2, Section 4D allows for educational opportunity for all students when demonstrated that the purpose of the absence is to take advantage of a valid educational opportunity. Until two years ago, CCS adhered to that policy for all students. Since 1975, I have sponsored, co-sponsored, and organized several visits to college campuses and recruiting fairs, and have been very successful with students from local high schools, from the Glenn Center, and students with GEDs. Many colleges and universities sponsor programs such as diversity-free college visits for students, minority students, first-generation, and undocumented students. We get the students to the campus, and the college takes care of everything else. Normally, I do about 12 trips a year. Because of the policy change, I only did three this year. Davison College, which was October the 20th, Appalachian State, which is September the 19th, and Virginia Tech, which is November 15th and 16th. At each of these events, students have been accepted. We have done the Virginia Tech trip for over eight years. Some school systems bring busloads of students with hope of success. Honda Battle of the Band in January, I'll be taking a bus there. Many bands take their entire band because these students can get admitted to colleges as well as scholarships. The CIAA also has a recruiting event that has college prep, search, applying, paying, NCAA clearinghouse, and succeeding in college workshops. The new policy limits the exposure of students to benefit from college experience. I realize that the school staff has worked very hard and are actually overworked, underpaid, and may not have the time to develop or contact schools or maybe establish groups or programs. But some of the other systems brought children from Virginia, from Maryland, from as far as South Carolina, to Virginia Tech, and I think we can do that, too. I hope that you will reconsider the current policy or encourage high schools to work together and combine students from different schools to take advantage of these opportunities. I'm passionate about supporting the growth in educators, education of others, and I hope you are, too. And I have with me some of the information. This is, this is split out each year, Fall 2014 Free Diversity College Visits, and this is the information about Davison. I do share a lot of this information with guidance departments in local schools, the multicultural experience day that Appalachian puts out, Virginia Tech, they have their, oops, they have their outline of the program and the map, the Honda Battle of the Band showcase. So, all of these things that seem to work because we've been very successful with a lot of students in Cabarrus County. And lately, I've been accommodating students in Mecklenburg-Gastly and other counties because they do have an educational opportunity day for high school students. And right now, we only have it for middle and elementary. So, please consider modifying the program, and if you don't modify it, please consider looking at one of the systems who has a program where they combine a lot of the schools so that those children can get that opportunity that a lot of ours are missing. And another note, these students are the ones who fall between the crack. These students began with a 2.0, it's where they said they have a 2.0, 2.5, all the way to 4.0. And we took nine students to Virginia Tech. One student was from Hickory Ridge, the other was from Gastonia in Charlotte, and all nine were accepted. So, now we're looking for money for them. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Means.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we are now going to the approval of the January 12th consent agenda. I need a motion, and do you see the items that we have on the consent agenda for approval? I need a motion to approve these items.
Subdue.
All right. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll go to the approval of the budget amendments by Mrs. Klutz, or Ms. Klutz, excuse me. And we had put this on the action agenda, so Ms. Klutz is up here at the podium to answer any questions that you may have or to present?
No, sir, I'm not, didn't plan to present, but if you have questions, I know that we pulled it off and put it on action because there were two members that were absent last week, so if there are any questions that anyone has, I'm certainly willing to answer those.
Board members, are there any questions that you have of Ms. Klutz?
Klutz, what, item two, what, what group homes do we work with?
I'll be glad to get that information for you. I really don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
But I can get that information for you.
Didn't mean to throw a card down. But it's a great thing that we are working through those agencies.
Could you explain what is happening in the child nutrition budget? Or it looks like you're taking somebody out of one place and then putting it back in somewhere else. Just explain to me what the rationale was on that.
Sure. We think that's, it's a great way to save dollars and labor in our school system. What happens is that we were having to, because of federal dollars, anything you buy with federal dollars and child nutrition is a federal dollar, you're required to get three bids on products that could be $10 or $25, what have you. Our local board policy is $5,000 or greater. If it's more than $5,000, we require three bids. But our staff was spending a ton of time going out and getting three bids for a part that was $25. And then they experienced where the vendors didn't want to provide bids because it was just way too much trouble for them. So we talked with DPI in the child nutrition. We talked with facilities department and the child nutrition department, the finance department. We all came together and we thought this was a wonderful solution. What we do is we increase the indirect costs that child nutrition pays. We put it in a local fund and then we comply to the board's local policies. And it saves everyone, it saves money, it saves time aggravation, saves the local relationship with our vendors, all of those things. We think it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you. That helps a lot knowing that.
Yeah.
Don't see any other questions. Board members, I'll need a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as written? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries, seven zero. Now we have the approval of the School Resource Officer Program Memorandum of Understanding. Dr. Lauder will come to the podium and answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Walter?
I saw that Mark, that you added some things, and I think that we covered just about everything that I had talked about. The one thing that I didn't see in here is, and again, the key, I think that what we were trying to do is just memorialize what we're already doing and put it in a document. Just the listing of somewhere that they provide to us, the names of the officers that are in each of the program, each of the schools. I mean, apparently there are some schools now that don't have an identified officer at this point, but when they do, they ought to be somewhere in here that it would notify us or keep up to date, that someone would keep up to date on who those officers are. That's the only thing I saw, but I appreciate adding the other items.
Think on that. We've got where they will tell us who they are appointing to the school as part of the provision for appointment. In terms of the logistics of the list, I mean, that is something that they provide. But in talking to Dr. Lauder, I wasn't sure we needed a, you know, trying to specify a specific time or particular place for a list of SROs. I wasn't sure. The easiest way to do that, but they are, the way you have the appointment is that they will advise us of who they're appointing to each school. And so when there's a vacancy, they'll make that appointment and tell us, and then we kind of update the list on who's where.
So you're comfortable the way it is?
Yeah, yeah. Mark and I worked on that together. And again, they're very good about that. And so, yeah.
You're the contact person. If you're comfortable, I'm okay with this.
Yep, very comfortable.
All right, board members, any more discussion on this?
No, I was just gonna make my motion.
Okay. Carolyn has made the motion.
I would make a motion to approve the, this, wait a minute, let me get back here. I had, I was, wait a minute, I was trying to see what we called it. I would make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the resource officers.
All right. Ms. Carpenter's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Harrison seconds it. All in favor of approving it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries, seven zero. That carries us to our next item. And that is Policy 4154, the Magnet School Program Enrollment and Continuation. It is our second reading. Dr. Lauder is at the podium. Are there any questions? Mr. Walter?
Okay. I know that we'd beat this thing to death at this point, so I'm gonna make mine pretty short. Again, this goes back to, we didn't have a policy before. We have a policy now that I think is much better than what it was. I mean, I thought it was a, I think we've added some things in here now that cover a lot of the things that protect students or help students. I mean, I think I had a list of six things that I really wanted to see in a policy. One was notice. We covered that. Two was criteria that was clearly provided, and we've done that. Help for struggling students, I think we've covered that. Revising the criteria, we didn't really get to where my satisfaction level is on that. But number five was reviewing removal decisions, and I think we've improved on that. There is now another second layer before someone is removed from the program. And then my last point was providing help for students that are removed, the transition, to smooth that transition. And I don't think we addressed, quite addressed that. But to narrow it down and to take the advice of my fellow board member, just really, the key thing is, I think I can live with this policy with two additional changes, two changes. And those two would be, if you go to page number two, number five, to switch the A and the C. I think we need to make students that are in the final grade of a program the priority to remain in that program, above and beyond. And I understand that as Mr. Harrison was talking, it really, you don't, all don't see it as a, you know, one, two, three, four, but it does as you read through that. You just want to make sure that the students are placed first. And then secondly, under, which number is this one? This is C, number two. I would like to see a couple words added, and that goes back to here. We talked at the beginning of this thing. We talked about Magnet Expectations Shall Include Academic Interventions. And all I'd like to see here is if we're talking about removing students, that would they have the opportunity to, in the policy that says that academic interventions will be provided for appropriate time period prior to removing a student from the program. I think I can live with that. And I hope the rest of you can. I mean, there's a lot of other issues I think can be approved, but we've gone through this back and forth, back and forth several times. But at this point, I'd like to suggest those two changes to the policy and move on with it.
Should we take these one at a time?
Yes, I would like to take these one at a time, board members. And the first one was the request to switch section, in section B, the Procedure for Admission, number five. And this is on page two of four.
Two of four.
He wants to, Mr. Walter would like to switch the C dot up to the A dot and move everything down one.
I'm not following.
Is that, isn't that what you wanted? Or did you want to move A to C and C to A?
That is correct.
Which, which one?
The students in the final grade of Magnet Program should be our top priority for moving on to them.
C?
Yes.
So C goes to A. Does A move to B or does A move to C?
I have no preference.
Okay. Because I was just gonna slide it all down one.
So basically, he wants to move this in front of that.
Oh, in other words.
Any more comments on this? I see Ms. Carpenter's mic'd up.
Okay, I follow what you're saying.
Can you relieve your mic? I see, Mr. Powell, do you want to say anything? Okay. All right. A second, we haven't got a motion yet.
Well, he made a motion, right? Your motion is to make that change.
Oh, okay. You can make a motion to make that change for that specific thing. All right, do I have a second to Rob's motion to make the change on B5 and to switch C to the A position and move A and B down one?
Second.
All right, I have a second. All in favor of making that switch, say aye. Or is there any discussion? I'm sorry. I didn't think there was. That's why.
I think it's a perfectly reasonable request and does not alter any other meanings in any sense. I think the committee could be very agreeable to it.
We just want to make sure, so are we making C, A, or we just want to know the order to put it in?
You're gonna make C?
C, A, B.
Okay.
And C would become, C would become...
A.
A. And, and A would become...
B.
And again, the intention is to emphasize returning students.
All right, board members, are we ready to vote on this?
Well, let's put this thing to bed.
Well, no, this is the first part. We got one more.
Yeah, after the second one.
Yeah, they should put it to bed. All right, so let's take care of this one first. All in favor of Rob's motion to make this move on section B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, that particular motion carries. So we have the movement from in section B.
Okay.
Next is Rob's change to section C, which is the Continuation Expectations, number two. Is that correct, Rob? Can you go back through that with us?
Yeah. And again, the word smithing of it, I'm not sure exactly how it should be worded, but I'll give you, give you something to go with. We talk about making sure we have academic interventions in place for students that are struggling. And all I want to see is in number two, that those, that we address that by saying, students who do not meet the program's Magnet Expectations will be provided academic interventions for a appropriate time period prior to being exited from the program. And that's as general as I can get it.
Is that a motion?
All right, so Mr. Walter has made a move, made a motion to make a change to number C2, that the interventions would be a reasonable amount of time. Is there a second to that motion? All right, Ms. Fur, seconds? Wait a minute. So C2, RW.
I thought number two, we reviewed that. We thought that met the, our committee said...
If you look in A1, that's where I think we thought we covered that.
All right, so in discussion.
The last sentence there, "Each program, school's Magnet Expectations Shall Include Academic Interventions That The Program Shall Use In Order To Assist Students Who May Fall Below The Program's Expectations."
I think tying it to exiting the program is appropriate. I think making it clear that we don't want to remove them from the program until something is specifically done for an intervention for an appropriate time. And making it general gives everybody the flexibility to tailor it to their needs. Some semester-long courses, some year-long courses.
I gather that the intent is just to reemphasize exactly that.
And I would say it's certainly something that the committee doesn't disagree with. In other words, before somebody should be exited, should there be academic interventions? Absolutely.
All right, board members, I think we have an understanding here. We have a motion. Any more discussion?
Can I?
Oh, wait a minute.
Yep, I'm just trying to call some of the discussions back in the drafting. I guess if you had an academic expectation that was, for example, a particular test score, I don't, I mean, if you had to, you know, achieve a certain end-of-grade test to stay in the program, if you add that you can't exit them unless you've done academic interventions, you're gonna create tension between expectations that may be achieving a particular score and a question about, well, what academic interventions were done. So I guess that's a concern. And I guess it's been a while now since we first discussed that, but that would be a question. I guess I welcome staff thoughts on that. And I know we review different, different schools with different criteria, but that would be a question. Does that mean that if you don't meet the test expectation, that you've got to then have academic intervention before exiting? Because you could interpret, I think, the change to acquire that.
I think that's a positive unintended consequence that diminishes the role of the EOG or the achievement test at the end of whatever marking period. I like how that happens. I like that tension.
Dr. Lauder, do you have a response?
I'm not sure I follow the last comment there. So Mark, I think, and Mark, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think Mark's question is, are there students where there won't necessarily be lots of red flags that we can do interventions for before they end up with a test that's below, below grade level? I still would emphasize what Dr. Van Huclum has said before, even in those scenarios, remember, there are parachutes or safety nets underneath that. So even when that doesn't happen, then we look at student grades and then we look at teacher recommendations. So...
There aren't parachutes for the barely qualifying student. They're, the parachutes are taken away once they are in the program. If you're, if you barely qualify with a low passing average and a low Level III EOG, and you, and your EOG dips below, then until we see that new criteria that the teachers are filling out for, to separate STEM and IB, which I think was a charge at the December meeting, then those marginal kids who barely got in, their EOG slips, now they're, now they're out because they never were outstanding students according to that criteria.
Not unless they're doing poorly in each of those classes on top of doing poorly.
The teacher reference does not say poorly. It says, it's very slanted to be high academic achievement-type questions on that teacher recommendation. So the one that's done online, which is why I think we wanted to separate the STEM and the IB, so until those are separated, it's, it puts that kid who's a below-average but still passing student, they qualify for STEM. But once they get in, their EOG slips a little bit, and now all of a sudden, they don't qualify. So...
But they don't qualify unless they're doing, what was it, below a C average in their academic courses. So they barely qualify, they're in, now I'm not at grade level according to my test score, and I'm below average in all of my four academic grades averaged together. And then we're also gonna look at teacher recommendations. So there is a major safety net there that takes you just away from, from test scores, which I think is one of the things that Jason was emphasizing all along.
Can they have a below-average, can they achieve, or can they be at below average and still get in?
Yeah. So remember, like, I don't know, off the top of my head, but we had many students, I want to say over 50% of the students who did not meet their EOG requirements stayed in the program because those safety nets worked for them. So I do think we have some strong safety nets. But to answer the bigger question about the changes, the suggestion that Rob's recommending is not change, will not change our practice and is only reinforcing A1. So I'm totally fine with that, that recommendation.
All right, board members, Dr. Phillips, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just, based on that discussion, in the scenario that Dr. Lauder raised, if a student during the course of the year, his grades are dipping below the C average, then that's the time to make the academic interventions so that if the student doesn't get a three on EOG, they at least can, can make it via the second route.
Right. And that's gonna be essentially mandated that they do it. And then remember, before somebody would be exited, it would still go to someone in the curriculum department to say, we are comfortable that this person didn't meet it. So there's kind of two checks on that. So absolutely. And that is very much the intention, is exactly what you just said.
I think maybe what, by putting in what Rob is doing, it gives us an extra little bit of wiggle room for that very special case where a child is doing great the whole year, and then at the end of the year, the grades just drop off and the EOG score is lousy, and you go, what happened?
Right.
And then maybe there's a special, you know, appeal to the superintendent and just gives us the wiggle room to do that.
All right, yeah, okay. Mr. Harrison?
And, and maybe we should take a vote on that separately than, from what I'm gonna suggest, but, um, uh, just as a follow-up after this vote, if I could have a comment, please.
All right, let me finish this one. All right, we have a, we have a, uh, motion and a second to make a revision to C two to take, uh, to add this language on interventions that Dr., um, I mean, that Mr. Walter's proposed. Do you have that language fairly clear?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Burns, thank you so much.
I don't want it toppled on it by them tomorrow before publishing to the board.
Excellent. All right, so, do I have, now that I have the motion, let's vote on this. Any more discussion? Good. Um, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, that motion carries. Now, Mr. Harrison, you had a comment.
Um, only because we can all agree that we have spent a great amount of time on this policy. And I'm remembering the, um, President Ronald Reagan's quote, which is nothing to sneeze at, I might add. Beg pardon, um, that I, I trust that this policy will work extremely well, have absolute faith and absolute confidence that it will, but I would like to verify, please, this summer, if we can have, uh, statistical data reports of students' grades, how they're doing, how they've gone through each of the programs to which this policy applies, and demonstrate for us this summer how this policy is being applied. Is that appropriate to suggest at this moment?
Can I, can I refer you to the A four?
I know there will be some statistical data.
Annual report on this, on this specific information for each magnet program, which would be the number of demographics, students currently enrolled in each program, and by grade level, aggregate student performance scores on state mandated tests and any other standardized tester measures, proportion of students that did not meet expectations, including the number of students provided academic intervention, and the number of students that left the program, and finally, the student capacity by grade level, number of applications. So, it sounds like it's a very comprehensive annual report that they will be giving us sometime this summer.
And if it's gonna be this summer...
We struck out July and just put annual so that they weren't held to a specific date.
Because I would like it, if, again, if it is feasible for all that data to be pulled together and for some additional assessments or decisions to be made, so that if we have any, uh, especially glaring needs to make an additional change to the policy, that we can do it this summer, and that it would therefore apply to the 2015, 16 year. If that's, if appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's all part of the policy, and, and again, if I could just say, Ms. Burns has kind of been the person who's caught all this and kind of tweaked it for me, so I want to tell, say how much I appreciate her doing the work to get all that. And as much as we've kind of commented and joked about this, the reality is, we do have a better policy than we did when we started, and that's a good thing for students, and that's what we want.
She's gonna get the magnet, the magnet award.
Well, Dr. Lauder, Ms. Burns, I want to thank you all for your, for your persistence and stick-to-it-iveness. Rob, I want to thank you for your stick-to-it-iveness in this. And Carolyn and David, I know that you sat through many meetings as well, so thank you all for your work on this, this policy. And you too, Mr. Dr. Van Hugle.
Well, I'll make a motion that now we approve the policy 4154.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vince, Mr. Powell?
I was about to object, but I know you all beat me, so...
Uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, the new policy, 4154 is official. Dr. Shepherd has a comment before we go into closed session, so I'll turn the floor over to him.
I meant to add this as part of my comments earlier tonight, but I want to make the board aware and the community aware as well, that tomorrow is an important day in education in the state of North Carolina. Superintendents will be at the Capitol tomorrow, and we will be holding a press conference to issue our North Carolina Guide to Strengthening Our Public Schools. That's never happened before in the state of North Carolina, that we would join together as a force and say, "We believe that this is the ingredient for improvement," or the recipe for improvement. And it's important because right now, we have a lot of people who claim to be educational experts that are making decisions, recommendations about education, and you have 115 school districts and very capable staffs in each of those districts, particularly this district, and those are your educational experts in this state and, and the people that need to be running, uh, educational, um, guidelines for our state. And so, I'll have copies of those made available to you tomorrow. Jessica, they will copy made available to you as well, and help us in getting the word out that I think this is a pretty good document to begin with this year, and it will occur. The press conference will occur tomorrow at 11 o'clock. I think it's been moved indoors, not on the Capitol steps because of inclement weather, but I'm looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, and have a safe journey tomorrow. Board, board, board members will now convene in closed session, and I'll need a motion that pursuant, uh, that we convene in closed session pursuant to the General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney. Uh, also pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence of performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, conditions of initial employment of a public officer, and, uh, General Statute 115C 39-319 through 321. Do I have a motion to convene in closed session? David Harrison?
Second.
Rob Walter made the second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in closed session. Thank you.